Good afternoon. The Board of Trustees meeting is now called to order at 4:30 PM. We welcome members of the public, all of you that are here. Instructions on making public comment are posted in item one of the agenda. And at each item, we will ask if there's public comment. Catherine, will you please do roll call?
Absolutely. Student trustee Alejandro Martinez.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Kishinev.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Deluna.
Here.
Trustee Olson is presently absent and trustee Dodd.
Here. Do you think the pledge of allegiance?
It is the flag of the United States of America. Our land, our nation, under God, in this world.
As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded traditional ancestral and contemporary homelands of the Miwok. Patwin were composed of three federally recognized tribes. The Kachaldehi Band of Winton Indians, the Kletzeldehi Band of Winton Indians, and the Yochadehi Winton Nation and Wapo, including the Michiwa Wapo, also known as the Onostiis Peoples. As part of Napa Valley College's mission of preparing students for evolving roles in a diverse, dynamic, and interdependent world, and in accordance with the college's values of honesty, integrity, inclusivity, and water, may we hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice with the Miwok, Patwin, and Wapo peoples. We'll look to adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes? Seeing none, we will adopt it by consensus and move on to public comment on closed session items, where the board will devote up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. And we will limit individual comments to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
We will note for a roll call, trustee Olson is here and live in the flesh. I have not received any public comment either. So at this time, the board will move into closed session covering classified employee appeal from admin determination, a section 54, 957, public employment matter, which is items 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, and item 4.5, public employee performance evaluation. We'll look to return, try to return at 5:30, I think it's probably gonna be more like 5:45. Good evening. The board returns back from closed session at 5:35 PM. In closed session, the board approved the following full-time classified administrative assignments. Ron Aubrey as Director of Public Affairs and Communications, starting December 18, 2023. Salary will be based on admin confidential salary schedule range 19, step C. Salary will be prorated for any partial monthly service. Also, Miguel Argus is Director of Facility Services, starting January 3, 2024. Salary will be based on admin confidential salary schedule range 21, step C. Salary will be prorated for any partial monthly service. The Board of Trustees also approved the full-time temporary classified admin assignment of Daniel Vega as Acting Assistant Director of Institutional Technology from January 1 through March 31, 2024, or until that position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first. Acting Assistant Director, monthly salary will be based on admin confidential salary schedule range 17, step E, $9,060. Mr. Vega will also receive a monthly stipend of 10% of classified salary schedule range 31, step H, at $897 from January 1 through March 31, 2024, or until that position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first. You're looking at me strangely, Catherine? I did. I'll go through. To finish there, salary is secondly prorated for any partial month of service. We also have a readout language, appeal of administrative determination. In closed session, the board unanimously voted to deny the appeals from an administrative determination on the discrimination complaints of classified employees pursuant to Title V, section 59, 338. Back to our readouts, just trying to run through this very quickly. And then more closed session. This is from 9.5, excuse me, so I'm getting a little discordant, I think. Now I see why you're giving strange looks. I think I did that part, right? I'm not gonna do these additional readouts, which I will do later when we reach that agenda item. So if there are no other weird looks to my direction, we will, there are more weird looks. What's happening? Yeah, 9.5? Do you want to read the hows and fours or save it for 9.5? I saw it was kind of ragged, just partially strange look. Well, move to general public comment. This public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and different vantage points. We're just enabled under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion. But we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote 15 minutes to hear public comment regarding any subject not carrying as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur in such items. Each comment shall last longer than three minutes. Catherine notes, there's no public comment. I have not received any either, and there is nobody in the crowd raising their hands. So we will move on to consent calendar. Are there any questions on our consent? Seeing none.
Move approval.
Jennifer, trustee Baker, and trustee Deluna for your second. Is there any public comment on this?
No, there isn't.
Or consent? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent approved unanimously. Okay, throw another little wrench into this EV's agenda. Just a small wrench, but a nice looking wrench from San Diego. We are going to move our audit report, which is item 12.12, wait, fourth, thank you trustee Baker. And we'll do that now, since Mr. Levitt has, like, that's okay with the board. You can proceed and take your time to get yourself situated.
If I can just introduce Mr. Levitt. And this, I'm responding to a recommendation from the Audit and Finance Committee to move this forward to the full board. This is the annual audit of the institution's financial statements required by law and reported to the chancellor's office. And it allows the institution to gain access to Title IV funds, student financial aid funds, as well as other funds available in the state and federally. So we welcome Mr. Levitt, but I want to acknowledge the contributions of the team that on our side will help put this together and respond to Mr. Levitt, including Wendy Newcho, David Prince, Doug Roberts, and the entire finance team. So I just wanted to get their names out there, because while Mr. Levitt did the hard work, we certainly helped to provide the information, so thank you.
Definitely, Jim, thank you. Lot of hard work to go around with an audit. So I just want to echo that, express our appreciation to district staff as well for a tremendously transparent process that, as I mentioned to the Audit and Finance Committee, enabled us to be in a position to opine in a very timely fashion, well in advance of the state's required reporting deadline. So president Dodd, members of the board, I appreciate the flexibility, and thank you for having me here tonight. Like I mentioned, I spoke with budget and finance, or rather, audit and finance, earlier this week. We went into a bit more detail than I'm planning to go into tonight. I'll keep this at a higher level. But if there's any questions throughout this brief presentation, or any things that you'd like to say till the end, I'd be more than happy to drill into any aspects of the document, any aspects of our testing throughout the year to your satisfaction. So with that, I'll just dive right in. The audit report focuses on four individual auditors' reports contained within this document. The document that you see before you today is in draft form. That was how it was submitted toward the beginning of this week. It has since been brought into finalized form. There were several good comments from the Audit and Finance Committee that have since been incorporated. So in a couple sections toward the end, where I think those are more important, I'm gonna reference what changes have been made from this draft to that finalized version. And bound and printed copies are gonna be shipped next week to all members of the board and for district reference. But those four auditors' reports in this document start with our independent auditor's report, which appears on document page one. That's our chief work product, where we opine on the fairness of the presentation of the overall district financials. And as I relayed to Audit and Finance earlier this week, for fiscal '23, we're able to provide an unmodified opinion. That's the highest quality opinion an auditor can render, and is to say, based upon the results of our testing for this year, these financial statements can absolutely be relied upon by the district's full governing board and all of the district stakeholders. So moving past that auditor's report, the remaining three independent auditor's reports, the remaining kind of three sections where we really speak to the results of the audit, are going to begin toward the back of the report on page 68. And in that report, called the Yellow Book Report, appearing on the first page on page 68, that speaks to our testing on controls and controls over compliance. And in that section, had we noted any exception to particularly fiscal controls? Had we noted a breakdown in the myriad areas that we looked at district controls? We would note that in this section of the report, further detail it in the back of the document, we note no such exceptions in fiscal '23. So an entirely clean Yellow Book Report for fiscal '23. The next opinion is our federal opinion. The testing performed under the Uniform Guidance, the Single Audit, appearing on document page 78. And actually, I should note, one comment made during Audit and Finance that has been since incorporated into this document was a pagination error, which we have identified, and we fixed that as well. So that was a great comment, and the final report will reflect that update. So these page numbers I'm referencing are draft page numbers, but they're subject change a little bit. That federal opinion is where we focus our federal testing and the results of that testing. In the current year, we're primarily focusing that testing on the Student Financial Aid Program, which is always going to be a major program of the district, as well as kind of those last vestiges of CARES Act, those per funds that are coming in in really significant amounts. Had a finding been noted over our federal testing, that would be indicated here and then further described in the back of the report. We note no exceptions to federal compliance for fiscal '23. And that brings me to the very last area of our testing, which appears and starts on document page 73, our auditor's report on state compliance. State compliance is where we really focus on procedures spelled out by the chancellor's office in the annual updates to the CDAM or the Contracted District Audit Manual. This is a very broad section of testing. With the committee, we described how, on document page 75, you can see those procedures listed out, quite a bit of breadth, going beyond fiscal, taking us into student financial aid, admissions and records, other departments where typically a financial audit would not roam to. But this audit, as Jim correctly mentioned, also concerns federal and state compliance, and so it's very expansive in nature. The lone exception that we note for fiscal '23 does occur in this section of the report. We described that finding as 2023-001, and I'll speak to that in more detail in the very final section of this document, the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. But with that one exception, over the 50% law, we note no other areas of noncompliance with state compliance, in spite of the many, many areas we're required to test in that area. That final section is gonna begin on page 76. So Schedule of Findings and Question Costs on document page 76 is really kind of a nice overview, a summary of the entire kind of realm of our testing for the year. So we've got our testing over the financial statements up top, federal awards, right in the middle section of that page, and then state awards at the bottom, where we note that significant deficiency, which I just want to point out to members of the board, is kind of defying the terminology, is less significant than the category of material weakness. So out of those two options that we have available for reportable findings, significant deficiency is definitely the lesser of the two. And then we detail that on the state findings page, which is on page 79. So on page 79, you can see that lone finding in the current year, which is noted as a repeat finding, finding 2023-001, concerning the 50% law. And I just want to give proper context to this. This is a challenging area to me. One thing that we discussed in the committee is that 50% law is something where many of your peers throughout the state, and we work with about 40% of them, all the districts in the state, we had the privilege of serving that number. Many of them are right off the cuff of being out of compliance with 50%. There's a number of districts that are within one percentage point of that mark, and a number that are also on the wrong side are lesser than 50%. So this is an area where the state is looking for districts to ensure that at least 50% or more of dispersments are going toward the salaries of classroom instructors or instructional-related type expenditures. This is detailed out, actually, in the supplementary section of the report, which maybe I'll bring up real quickly on document page 64. You can actually see that full schedule of where this ratio is generated. Where on document page 64, in those left three columns, we see all the way to the bottom, that total driving the numerator for the 50% law, that 16.964 million, constituting 45.28% of that grand total current expense of education denominator of 37.467 million. So essentially, that's what we're looking at. When we're looking to 50%, we're testing the categories that are being claimed on the right side of that law. And just to maybe flesh out our testing, our testing determined that the district is accurately reporting this item. Nonetheless, it's noted as a significant deficiency, because the ratio itself is outside of compliance with what the state is looking for. Very challenging area, an area that requires tremendous amount of strategic planning, you know, all the way up to the very highest levels, district governance, multi-year planning to set this right. Comments noted in the committee referenced how the district is moving in the right direction with respect to 50%. And maybe I'll pause there, actually, just to see if there's any questions for members of the board on this one lone finding, before I get to the very last section, which is a section that we think is really neat, that actually came based on a board recommendation. But yeah, let me pause right there for a moment.
Jim, did you want to share what you shared with the committee about the additional audit that we're anticipating on that?
Yes, thank you, trustee Baker. A couple of points on the 50% law. First of all, we are making progress on the 50% law. Two years ago, it was in the 41% range. Last year, it was in 42, mid-42, now we're at 45.28. This is a measure of our activity through fiscal year 22, 23, excuse me. It does not take into account the SERP that was put in place effective July 1, or does not take into account the salary increases that were provided to faculty under contract and how different they are from classified. So we anticipate we'll continue to make some progress there. That said, the Board of Governors, in their wisdom, have determined that they want to look at 10 institutions who have not met the 50% law threshold. Several of them are actually supported by local property tax, community-supported institutions like us. And we have not received official notice yet. We have been hearing about this since late summer, but we have not received official notice yet. And we will go through an audit. They will look at several areas of our operation to determine if we are in fact... They're looking for increases in trends outside of 50% law to see what exactly is happening. The chancellor's office has asked all of these 10 colleges to report on several of the assets the institutions now have that support teaching and learning that are not necessarily people standing in classrooms. The 50% law was written in 1961, when teachers were doing lots of face-to-face instruction, and didn't have the benefit of the assistance of technology in those cases. And so we are providing the chancellor's office at least some ammunition to look at the 50% law in a more modern way. So that's the latest on the 50% law. I don't know what we'll see from that. I will share with you that an apportioned district typically sees a financial charge to their institution or a reduction of their apportionment. We have not realized that or seen that, because we are a community-based institution. And so since they're not giving us that apportionate money, they can't take it from us. So that's been our safeguard for the moment, but certainly we want to do everything we can to meet that law, that threshold, and still contribute to a conversation that says, this may not be the most accurate way to measure investment in teaching and learning on our campuses.
You'd be in good company in having that perspective, because like Jim mentioned, the time when that law came into effect, categorical funding was a much smaller percentage of the overall funding that districts were receiving. And those categorical funds require additional administrative support to ensure that that's being properly managed, accounted for, claimed. And so there's things that have changed since the 1960s that it would be great if the state could take into account. But unfortunately, we are bound by the law as it stands right now, and that law requires us to somewhat slap your wrist with this comment. So I just want to give it the proper context that it deserves. Moving past that comment, going into the very final section of the report, the unaudited supplementary section, I want to highlight this, because we feel it's commendable. That section starts with page 81 and 82, which are providing in detail the fund financials of the district. That's on the district's operating basis of accounting, as opposed to the government-wide presentation required by GASB national standards. This is a much more functional way to look at the way the district actually reserves and spends its funds. And this was voluntary inclusion in the report that was prompted by this governing board. So that is something that not all of your peers are doing, many of them are not. And we think is outstanding to enable a user of the financials to be able to have that perspective at a more detailed, more operating level than just that consolidated presentation required by the accounting standards. The final thing, I want to direct your attention to the very last page of this document, document page 83. And there's been a change to this, but before I speak to that change, this is really tremendous as well. I don't think I am aware of a single report that includes this schedule, effectively a budget to actual schedule. This was specifically requested by this governing board. Members of the committee further made comments to improve this in two different ways, which we're really excited about. This schedule, as it stands here, is showing the way that the unrestricted general funds actuals compare with the final budget for fiscal '23. But one thing that you'll note that's a little bit confusing, if you go to the middle of the page, the excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures, it sure looks like the unrestricted general fund is underperforming the budget by 3.688 million, based on that negative variance column. That's simply a direction that doesn't really make sense, that the way that that formula is pulling right now. So we've changed that formula to reflect that, no, that should really be a positive number. So for instance, the revenue increase that we're seeing from budget, on the final version that's going to be shipped to you, will show as a positive number. The reduction in expenditures will show as a negative, a lessening of expenditures. And then ultimately, the excess of revenues will show as a positive number to make it that much more clear to members of the community that the district has outperformed the budget for the unrestricted general fund. And the other improvement that was suggested was to make this multi-year. So that's what we're going to be doing, starting with fiscal '24. We're going to be incorporating a lookback, so that multiple years of budget to actual are going to show in the district's financial statements, which is unique, as far as I've seen. And a really helpful thing, we believe, to users of these financials. So with that, I know that was at an extremely high level. I'd be more than happy to dive into any particular section of the report. I want to open for any questions any members of the board may have on any aspect of this document or any of our procedures for fiscal '23.
Any questions, trustees?
Absolutely. I was telling Jim and Wendy that there's literally, because we work with a number of districts, there's literally districts that are still providing us our request items this week. So it shows extremely well to not only be able to file timely with the chancellor's office, but also bring our opinions to this December board, something that cannot be taken for granted. It shows very well from our perspective on district staff.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to just cast a little light on an operating result here that the board is always interested in, and that's what our reserves are and how they've changed. And the very bottom line of the schedule here says fund balance ending. You'll notice that we projected, we started with a fund balance of 4.97, $797 million, and we grew it to 6.965 million dollars, or just under $7 million. That, in parentheses, that's actually a positive number, an increase of $2.168 million. That number is still a little short of our goal in terms of the kinds of reserves we want to maintain. And I just wanted to shed some light on the fact that that is certainly a board objective, to make sure we have enough in our reserves and our fund balance in the unrestricted general fund to assure that we can address any financial challenges that come along.
Trustee Baker, is there anything you want to add to that, just to give you the opportunity?
No, just let everyone know that we had unanimously, there were only two of us, but we recommended that the full board accept the audit.
I don't have any questions either. Catherine, do we have any public comment on our audit?
No, we do not.
Okay, well, then I would welcome a motion for approval. Thank you, trustee Deluna and trustee Rios, for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Levitt.
Thank you, president Dodd, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You too.
Safe travels home. See here. So we'll get back on track and move to another action, item 9.1, which is adoption of the district's initial proposal with the Union of Classified Professionals. Catherine, do you have any public comment on this item?
No, I see no public comment.
Great, well, I would welcome a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee Baker.
Second.
And trustee Olson for your second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted unanimously. 9.2, acceptance of Union of Classified Professionals' initial proposal. Catherine, any public comment?
No, there's not.
I'd welcome a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Thank you, trustee Rios.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Olson, for your second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted unanimously. We have District and Faculty Association initial proposal for re-opener. I don't think we need, it's not an action item. Is there any questions or discussion from the board on this? Any public comment? I don't see anybody in the crowd. Great, well, we'll go to 9.5, which is a consideration to enter into employment agreement with positions listed on board docs, which I will need...
Excuse me.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. Look at me. 9.4, Faculty Association initial proposal. This is a revised negotiations for a contract starting July 1. This is a revised, uh, negotiations for a contract starting July 1, 2024. Catherine, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on this? We will get back where I was. It's 9.5, which is an action item. Catherine, do we have any public comments on this?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Um, is there any questions? I would welcome a motion. If not, approval. Thank you, trustee Aggers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Baker, for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Catherine, I believe I need to read this out as well. So bear with for 10 minutes here, because this is quite long. Prior to considering this matter as required by Government Code, Section 54953, Subsection C3, I am providing a moral summary of the recommendation regarding salary-infringed benefits under the proposed contracts at the district for educational administrator. The district is entering into an employment agreement with Priscilla Mora as Assistant Superintendent EP Academic Affairs beginning July 1, 2023 through March 12, 2026. July 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, the Assistant Superintendent EP will receive a monthly salary at range 3 step E on the VP salary schedule, which is $15,535. She will advance on the salary schedule one step each subsequent January of this contract. Salary will be prorated for any partial monthly service. The ASPP shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as admin confidential employee group. Classified Administrator, the district is also entering into an employment agreement with James R. Reed as Assistant, uh, Superintendent Administrative Services beginning February 14, 2023 through June 30, 2025. July 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, the Assistant Superintendent VP will receive a monthly salary at range 3 step H on the Vice President's Salary Schedule, which is $17,984. He will advance on the salary schedule one step each subsequent January of this contract. February 14, 2023 through December 31, 2023, the Assistant Superintendent VP will receive an additional monthly stipend of $833.33 for providing oversight facilities. Salary will be prorated for any partial monthly service. ASPP shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as the admin confidential employee group. Classified Administrator, the district is entering into an employment agreement with Charo Alvaro as Assistant Superintendent VP Human Resources and Training and Development beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025. July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, the Assistant Superintendent VP will receive a monthly salary at range 3 step G on the Vice President's Salary Schedule with a $17,280. She will advance on the salary schedule one step each subsequent July of this contract. Salary will be prorated for any partial monthly service. ASPP shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as the admin that confidential employee group. Educational Administrator, the district is entering into an employee agreement with Alejandro Carrero as Assistant Superintendent BP Student Affairs beginning July 1, 2023 through May 18, 2026. July 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, the Assistant Superintendent VP will receive a monthly salary at range 3 step A plus longevity increments point in two on the Vice President's Salary Schedule, which is $14,093. He will advance on the salary schedule one step each subsequent January of this contract. Salary will be prorated for any partial monthly service. ASPP shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as the admin confidential employee group. Congratulations on, including me.
You have to, no.
Pass to, glad to make that right. We will go to item 2.1, Budget Values and Assumptions.
Uh, this document is, is, uh, presented to, um, was presented to the Audit and Finance Committee. It is a document that is, was generated internally, uh, by the Budget Committee. And, um, and we, we, uh, it's important that we bring it to the trustees, the Board of Trustees, uh, because it provides a backdrop for budget development. Um, this is a, um, fairly straightforward document. Um, I won't spend a lot of time, uh, with it, but it's, um, it speaks to, uh, uh, the importance of integrating planning and budget. Uh, and, uh, and places, um, priorities on fiscal stability in our budget planning. Uh, and, uh, values employees and, and their, their value to the institution. I would offer, there's one, there's one, uh, change we're recommending here uh, under personnel, and it is in, uh, right in the middle of the, a little further down. Thank you. That, uh, the second paragraph, MBCCD values employees committed to providing competitive salary and benefits while maintaining a three-year average not to exceed 85% of the unrestricted general fund devoted to salaries and benefits and instructional service agreements. Last year, it was simply a reference to the FICM metric. We didn't spell it out. And this just, uh, spells it out. This is important because it provides a backdrop for budget development that says this is where we want to be in terms of our budget. Um, and important because we are entering into contract negotiations with, um, our colleagues on the faculty and our colleagues on the classified staff. And, uh, moving further down, um, I think those were the significant changes in this document from last year. Under legal mandates, we continue to make a commitment to make progress on the 50% law. And that, that is the, uh, the essence of this document. Uh, I would, I would certainly encourage if you have any observations or suggestions about this, it does become, uh, effectively the bulwark for, uh, developing our budget into next year.
So trustee Baker?
They say this was also reviewed by the, uh, Budget Audit Committee or Finance Audit Committee. And, um, we, uh, we recommended approval of it to the whole board. Um, there was one comment that was made that it would be nice to, um, see some integration of the board goals and also the new, um, uh, mission and vision and values that were adopted for the whole institution to have that reflected in this document as well. So maybe in the next, next version, we can see that.
Trustee Baker, if I can make a recommendation about the motion to accept this, that it include those conditions now, and we'll make those changes now. Great.
I will make that motion.
Okay. Um, I'll second it. Okay. Well, there is a second. I do have, uh, a question. And is for the, the legal mandates and it's related to the 50% rule, which we just talked about. Um, but it says MBCCD will meet the legal requirements of the 50% law and faculty obligation number. And so I am trying to, I guess that first statement is, that's, this, I don't think that's a reasonable assumption that we can make that we're gonna, um, say we're gonna meet.
We may want to add that or request that we strive to meet the, um, 50% law or make, uh, reasonable efforts. Uh, something to that, um, to that effect. I'll share with you, I don't think we're going to meet the 50% law this year exactly. I think we're still going to be a little short.
Yeah.
Um, so.
And there's no way we're going to meet the faculty. I mean, last, I looked at the faculty obligation number and we're still, I mean, we're actually in grade even after the cert, when the, the state recalculated the FON. Um, I think we're like at 32 above FON.
Well, we're not going to get dinged on the FON for sure. We're way off FON.
We're just dinging ourselves. Um, yeah. Um, okay.
Do you want to, um, amend the, amend the motion to include those?
Are you okay with that?
I'm totally okay with that.
And trustee Kishinev, are you okay with that? Okay. Any other, uh, uh, discussion on that with the motion on the floor? Seeing none. Um, uh, trustee Kishinev? Um, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted unanimously with the changes, um, uh, regarding striving to meet the legal requirements of 50% and FON and then also incorporating our, our mission, uh, mission and value statements, um, into the document as well. Thank you, trustees. Uh, 12.2, Chancellor's Office Quarterly Financial Status Report.
Uh, this is the, um, 311 quarterly report that goes to the Chancellor's Office. Uh, I'll share with you that these numbers will look very familiar to you because you see them every month. Um, and however, we have an obligation, a requirement that we present these to the board when, uh, on a quarterly basis. Um, so that you are apprised of where we stand relative to our budget and how we're doing against that. Most institutions, many institutions and districts, report their financials once a quarter. Um, uh, you have requested for very good reason and good practice that, that we report them every month. So that's why this is looking like a little bit of, of double dipping or, or, um, running up the score on you. So this is a requirement of the Chancellor's Office. You'll notice in the right column, this is exactly the budget you adopted, uh, in 2324. Those numbers are exactly the same as you'll see on the, on the monthly report. Our actuals for 2223 is reflected, our operating actuals for last year, and then two years of, of actuals for the previous year. And, and the lower portion of the report, um, uh, it's again, uh, very similar information. What, what kind of cash do we have on, on, uh, on hand? Uh, H3 is our total cash on hand of about 13.8 million dollars today. Um, and, and we'll scroll forward down a little bit more. You can see we're unrestricted general fund revenues. Uh, these are again, projections in the far right column of revenues. Uh, for, for the year and expenses for the year. There, um, the very bottom section asks if there are any, um, financial issues that are essentially out of control. Those are my, my, uh, comments, not theirs. I can't remember exactly the narrative they've used there. There is no, we don't have any particular issues that are, that are out of control uh, or need remedy at this point. So that is the 311 quarterly report.
Any questions? Trustee Baker, do you want to make your?
We looked at this one also.
Give it a thumbs up now.
And made the recommendation that the full board accept it.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Any public comment, Catherine, on this item?
No.
Right. Well, I would welcome a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, trustee Olson. And trustee Rios for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously. Our General Fund 11 update.
Thank you, President Dodd. Um, just looking for my cheat sheet here.
Take your time.
That I didn't bring, so I'll just cheat. This is, um, the Fund 11 report on our unrestricted general fund through five months or 43% of our budget. And so, um, just the, the, the quick way to look at this, if you just wanted to spend a few minutes and try to glean where we are, look at the far right column and see how it matches against that 42%. That's not a perfect science, but it gives you a, a good idea of where we are. The perfect science is if we were to budget every single month for what we expect to spend, and then you would get a, a really fine-tuned approach to this, but we're not there yet. So our revenues were, we received 9% of our revenues, our budgeted revenues. We're actually about a million dollars more in revenue received this year as compared to this very same time last year. As I mentioned to, uh, Audit and Finance, most of our revenues will come in those two tranches from property taxes. And we haven't received that yet for the fall payment. So I would encourage you all, pay your property taxes so we can get paid. Um, we'll likely see that first trench in January. Um, that's an important number for cash flow purposes, and that's why we want to keep that reserve tall, that reserve in good place because we are in our shallowest period in terms of, uh, uh, funding coming in. From a salary perspective, the next to lying down, you'll see that we are at, uh, trustee Olson. Thank you. At 38%. That total is a pretty good number. There's a little something going on in faculty full-time and faculty temporary salaries. You can see we're under spending in our full-time and we're a little above budget in our part-time. That is likely because, and I don't know this for sure, but it's likely because we probably had a full-time faculty member who wasn't here and we backfilled with some part-time faculty. But I, in total for salaries, we're a little high on our student salaries. Uh, that takes, that needs a little closer look to see what's going on there. Um, but in total on salaries, we're trending below that 42%. On benefits, we're right at 40%. Right at 40%, so that's the other big item in our budget. So we're trending fairly, uh, fairly predictably in that area. The, uh, under total books and supplies, we're at about 40, 41%. You'll notice if you're looking at the variance column on the right. You'll notice we have a variance of 2,239%. That would ordinarily get most people's attention, uh, but you'll notice that the actual dollar numbers are fairly small, about $4,000. As compared to what we budgeted at about 28. So that, that's an expense that came out of our police department. I don't have any particular concerns about that. Uh, at the desk, it gets your attention, uh, pretty quickly, uh, if you didn't know the underlying reason. Onto, uh, total other supply, uh, operating supplies. Total is 42%. We have a variance of 114%. Thank you. We have a variance of 134%. That's a reclassification for rents. We, we've talked about, a little bit about this before. We've been asked to reclass our subscriptions for software into rents as opposed to in our capital outlay, and that's where you're seeing a variance there. Not a particular concern in the total budget. Um, but certainly a variance that, that you might ask me a question about, why are we, uh, why is that variance so high? Total, um, uh, our capital outlay is sitting at around 70%. I think those are largely, it's largely a timing issue. We probably spent some money at the very front end of the year. And, um, and don't expect that, uh, that spending rate to continue throughout. So that's an area you will want to keep an eye on. So our total expenditures are sitting around 39%. Excuse me. Which is clearly below the 42%. Um, uh, so we're in, in pretty good stead there. We are spending at about 1.4 million dollars more than we did at this time last year. But that's largely due to increases in, in salaries and some operating expenses. You would expect to see some increase in expenditures over the previous year. So all in all, I think it's fairly predictable and, and positive, a trend line in our budget expenditure so far. We always, we're always waiting for our revenues to show up to catch up to our expenditures, but I see no particular concern, uh, through, certainly through November of this year.
Any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
We will go to action item. It's a 13.1, uh, board policy revisions. Uh, we, that was our audit. I'm on, I'm on top of this. Trustee Baker? Just joking. Um, 13.1, the second reading of our VPs. Catherine, is there any, uh, public comment on this side?
Um, uh, no public comment.
Okay. Any, uh, questions in the board? Seeing none, then I would welcome a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee Rios.
Second.
And trustee Kishinev for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? VPs are approved unanimously. We'll go to a first reading of, uh, some additional VPs. Any questions on these? Seeing everyone shaking their heads, we'll go to 13.3, Chapter 3 Review, first reading of this. This is just really a review, just to say, uh, for accreditation purposes, Dr. Wonall, we're reviewing our board policies.
You'll have some more coming in January.
Right. Any, uh, thoughts or any issues with maintaining these, uh, board policies as currently drafted? Okay, then we'll move on. And Catherine, no other, or report? Then we will move to our president and cabinet reports.
Good evening. Um, I wanted to start by highlighting the ending enrollment for fall semester. This is the last week of the semester and we start again on January 17th, Wednesday. Um, so looking back, you can see that we, our total enrollments are relatively significantly up from fall 2022 when we had 9,860 separate enrollments and this, uh, fall 11,082, so up 12.39%. Um, the head count represents individual students and you can see we're a little over 500 additional students this fall relative to last fall. Um, we do have some adjustments in non-credit and are seeing positive. We do have some adjustments in non-credit and are seeing positive increase there as well. So for our spring 2023 enrollments, it's still early because we're a month away from starting, but currently we are showing we're on a similar trajectory for being up for spring as well. And this week we had a number of really great highlights. I know some of you were at these events, but for those who were not able to attend them, I wanted to just mention on Sunday, December 10th, we had the Cookies and Carols event, and that integrated both voice, guitar, orchestra and theater here at Napa Valley College, but also the Napa Valley Youth Symphony, and it was quite an amazing thing. The stage was filled with musicians from, it looked like maybe 10, 12 years old. They look quite young, all the way through our community members who are returning, taking our non-credit courses in music and playing with our credit students. So it was quite an amazing thing. The audience was just as varied, people of all ages, many children, many adults. It was just really a wonderful event. And it's representative of the sort of community outreach that our music and performing arts programs are doing. And then we had two pitting ceremonies this week. So on Monday, we had the psychiatric technician pitting ceremony. We had 14 graduates from that program. The student speaker was very moving, talking about the impact of this program and really the cohort experience of these students learning together over the course of three semesters. And then a little bit more information about our associate degree and nursing pitting ceremony, which was on Tuesday. And we had 35 graduates from that program. The youngest was 21 and the eldest was 56. We had people coming in from all stages of their life and all points of their career. And this is a very intensive program where they're studying together. Pretty, I mean, it's like a 10 hour a day program, really. Two of them got engaged during the program. One had a baby. We have another baby on the way in March. So this is representative of what our students are experiencing. Their lives are happening at the same time that they're studying. So while I'm talking about ADN, I could be talking about any program that we have here at the college. I wanted to highlight how diverse our students are in terms of their prior experience as well. An interesting selection of former careers, taxidermy, a raiderette, a nightclub performer, a paramedic and a psych tech grad from MVC. So we serve all students. And it was very moving and such lovely events.
And a caretaker for Bob Harris as well.
Yes, you're right, yes. Yeah, really wonderful. Also, an update on our educational master plan. So we have completed the survey focus groups and input sessions that were taking place over the course of the fall semester. We have identified five main sections that will appear in the master plan. Enrollment stabilization, I think you see that we're doing that already, but we want to continue to focus on that. Equitable student outcomes, culture and climate, infrastructure and fiscal sustainability and program alignment with regional labor needs. On January 16th, during our flex session, we're going to have another input session to review data from all of those prior sets of inputs. And we're going to get more feedback on these themes as well as the data that our consulting group, West Ed, has been compiling lots of different information that is really helping to develop the EMP. And then our plan, just as a reminder about the timeline, we're going to have a draft ready in early spring for constituent review that will go to all of our participatory governance groups for additional input. And then that will be coming to the board in April and second reading in May. So we are on track with our timeline and it's very exciting to see all of the input that's coming in. And the last thing I wanted to highlight is for spring 2024, I mentioned once before about the home college designation, which is part of being the member of the California Virtual Campus. So we are flipping the switch on that for spring 2024, which means that in cases where a student cannot get a class with us, they can retain their standing as an MVC student, but get the class that they need at any of our 116 colleges that offer the class in an online environment and continue to make progress toward degree completion. So we're very excited about providing that opportunity for our students as well. Thank you.
Good evening, board, and good evening, community. First off, I want to start off by wishing everybody an amazing holiday season and much rest as we go into the break and looking for some time off. I wanted to start off by really identifying, highlighting some key, some really important work that's happened in student affairs, specifically the counseling department and the work of the counselors. And really lift up some of the numbers so you can see exactly how many students that they've worked with over the course of the last few months. Really, this is just, this is just as fall semester, but at the end I have a little comparison to kind of look over multiple semester. But for you to see, this is the counseling service areas, not including general counseling, but you'll see up there all of our special programs, exactly how many students they saw. This is as of December 11th, so we are this week. This week has been busy. There's actually 323 appointments scheduled this week alone. So in addition to that number, there's more students we are serving. But you'll see there, 2,061 students have been served through these different programs over the course of the semester. If you scroll down for me. And you'll see exactly what are the reasons that they came in to seek support. From just general academic support to ed planning, registration, transfer specifically for EOPS and then personal support that they also need. Lot of appointments are in person. They're in, they're in the office, they're shifting to, coming in to see our counselors on campus. Counseling is available in person, Monday through Friday. So we're very excited to really shift out over the last couple of semesters, but we're also really responsive and aware that students also need to access us via virtual and or phone. So you'll see that we are still doing that work as well. So if we scroll down to the next page, this is now just a general counseling area. So this is the area where you'll see basically any students that's not part of the special program come in to see a counselor and you'll see the number climb there. 2,779 appointments, again, as of December 11th. So combined between those two numbers, it's a 4,884 appointments all semester, not including this past week. So there's a lot of, a lot of work that's been put in, obviously by our counseling staff, but also behind the scenes to even set these up. There's, there needs to be a point of contact. We are front office is the one helping in all of our different areas. Students can go ahead and do it online, set appointments online and virtually if they'd like, but a lot of it is phone calls. It's coming into the office. It's working directly with our classified staff on the front line. So I want to applaud their work as well. And actually, we scrolled a tiny bit. Yeah, there we go. So if you take a look on the, I guess, right hand side, you'll see kind of the numbers, what it looked like and kind of what counseling has done over the last couple of semesters. We saw a little bit of a tick down, obviously with COVID and the pandemic, but we are, we are now going up. So our numbers are slowly increasing, but I'm happy to see that students are coming in, they're utilizing our services. And to be quite honest with you, we're at the level of, so basically we have to put up wait lists for students to come in and see a counselor. So the students are coming in and they're wanting support, which is a really good thing. And again, here we break down kind of the reason codes there in the record. The appointments of what they're coming in to see counselors support. So I want to applaud the heavy lift of our counselors, of our staff in our different counseling areas for all their work. Shifting gears a little bit, I did a link there for you to check out. It's fun to read, so if you have downtime, if you want to look at our 2223 students. You can do that. Link is there and you can look it up if you'd like and go deeper into that. Finally, just going to end by talking about an activity that I got to participate in this, these last few weeks, which actually was a couple of months, but on December 1st, 2nd, 3rd, we had our first ever all in Spanish play for theater department. And it was Estrella Vida Maravillosa, which is The Wonderful Life, done in Spanish with English subtitles. So it was pretty powerful. And it was a celebration really of Latino culture, through drama, through stage. All Latino, Latinx cast, a Latino Latina director goes by they/them. And Ayisha Rivera, so really, really honored to participate in that kind of activity. We are excited about continuing to bring on more Spanish speaking drama through theater department and really represent all of our BIPOC communities. So a lot of work in that space was, got to be in the, so I was, made my debut and I had 42 lines total and I don't think I went up, so I was pretty happy about that. And I think maybe for the future, I might be behind the scenes and or promoting, but it was a powerful activity. So wanted to thank, thank all the cast there were, our theater department, Jennifer King and her crew for really helping us to do that and do that in a very powerful way. concludes my report.
From administrative services, I'm going to move through this fairly quickly. I think we've covered a lot of territory on our budget and our chancellor's office reporting and our institutional technology I would share with you. I believe I indicated to you that we have a new director of information technology, Mr. Terry McKinney. He's on campus, been here for about two weeks now and has been working closely with our team and the Illusian team to move us forward. He will be at the district technology committee meeting tomorrow. And anecdotally, I'm hearing fairly positive things about his work and the work of the IT team to move us forward. Moving down a little bit more, thank you. Student housing update, I'll share with you. If you drive by there, you can see that it's really taking form now and it has some, it's looking like a place that students will want to be a part of. So we're very encouraged about the schedule. We're still anticipating an on open, excuse me, an on schedule opening. And now we're sending out some information about dedication and opening that building. So we're going to make sure we get on all of your calendars so you can join us for that, for that big event. As of December 10th, we have 181 student applications in progress for the student housing program. 46 inquiries being pursued. Single rooms are said to be sold out and furnished studios are going quickly. Significant outstanding concerns in our housing program. We're looking at our food and how we support students in need of food. A big thank you to trustee Olson for advocating in the community to support some effort to support food on our campus. We have, we're working on some proposals internally now and we're looking for some funding to be able to roll it out. So while students may live here, we're still going to have some group that are going to be food insecure. So we're working on that. The Wine Education Center is looking forward to groundbreaking for that program in the spring. You can look forward to hearing more about that. You know that that project is DSA approved and we do have a, you authorized the retaining of a construction manager for that project. I will not steal trustee Deluna's thunder on the DAS report, but there is a DAS report here, their annual report. So trustee Deluna will expand on that, I suspect. I just wanted to give you a thank you for, thanks again, Jase. For your approval of a director of facilities. We've been about a director for over a year and they've had to rely on me, which is not a great place to go. But we're appreciative of that, that person. After tonight, we are scheduled to begin here on January 3rd. So after this meeting, I'm going to call him and ask him not to be late. So we're looking forward to having him on campus. Just an update on Ash Landfill, that's an ongoing issue. That's the area adjacent to the student housing facility. We have done some additional assessment there, some poaching and some testing, chemical testing. We actually presented that all to the county today at a meeting. We think we're in pretty decent shape in terms of putting in place what we need to put in place to assure the county that it is safe for student residents to move in. Again, it's removed from the student residential side, but of course, the county is, wants to be sure, take every measure to be sure that that's addressed. So some of those expenses are going to increase for that, just a bit of a heads up. But I think we are in good stead there. And I think that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Good evening, board. I'm here to give you your monthly update on accreditation. It looks very similar to what was shared at the meeting last month, but I want to call attention to a few highlights. So we completed the preliminary draft of responses to our six college requirements at the end of last month. So that's been incorporated as an explicit date. And also I know that Dr. Powell distributed that preliminary draft for the follow up report to you all on December 1st. So those are two additions. Catherine, if you could scroll down just a little bit. This is news that has occurred just over 24 hours ago, is that we were contacted by Ginny Mae, who is our interim VP liaison at the ACCJC. And she has identified a site visit date for us in coordination with Dr. Powell and the team members. So we have a site visit date of April 8th of next year. The team, and we anticipate a team of four people, four people plus our VP liaison from the ACCJC, and they expect to be here for one day. So that's new. And then on the right hand side of the update here, it tracks the distribution of the drafts to the campus community and you saw most of those as of last month, although there were a few that we accomplished at the beginning of this month. And then the next step is that we're working to post all of the evidence associated with the follow up report and post those along with updated iterative drafts of the responses to each college requirement. So we began that last week with college requirement one and the rest we anticipate sharing with the campus community in late January. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. I'll just conclude the president's area report with thank you. Want to say thank you to our faculty, to our classified staff, to our administrative confidential staff, to members of extended cabinet and cabinet for what's been a very productive, busy semester. In reflecting back on all of the things that we've accomplished this semester, I'm just so in awe of the collective work in action of the campus, really doing some big things. Things that, a lot of them aren't finished yet, but the foundational pieces for long term success and institutional transformation for MVC are really being established. So I want to say thank you. Happy holidays to the extended MVC community and family. Enjoy yourselves, hope you get some time with loved ones and look forward to seeing everyone in January when we come back.
Thank you, president and cabinet. We'll go to committee and other appointment reports. DAS report.
As Mr. Reeves pointed out, you all have your annual report in hand. It's beautiful. Thank you to Carol Lee and family for putting all of this together. And I especially like page four, because it has our pictures on it. But I just want to thank everybody on that committee. It's been a great learning experience and former board member Bruce Ketchum has been incredibly valuable on that. And I'm not sure if he contributed as much when he was a trustee as he does now on the desk committee, but it's been, it's been great for me. So nothing major to report, but we will be meeting again, I think, in February.
The Culture and Winery Foundation. Thank you, trustee Rios. Audit and finance, we've heard from, nothing from real property. Anything on fish? Assume not, we can go on that in January. And we'll move to future agenda item request.
And we'll move to future agenda item requests.
Nothing, everyone's so nose deep in the their their DAS reports.
Okay. Looks very similar, yes. Um excuse us. Uh trustee uh trustee reports, uh student trustee, Alejandro, Martins, you start us off.
I don't know since we report besides uh recently, I guess in C, we did like Angel Tree, basically, you know, helping out like, you know, like helping out like a child development. So I think it was on Tuesday, we actually went to go hand out the gifts out alongside Dean, Robin and DeAngelo. And it was great, but like I, I was wearing my sand hat and I was kinda ready to see some kids, but I guess they weren't there, so we had to hide the gift, so it was kind of disappointment. But um besides that, that's all I have. I think that includes my report and also uh Merry Christmas to you guys.
Trustee Kishna.
A couple of weeks ago, Dr. Powell and I met with the North Bay Minority Coalition and uh heard some of the concerns and some of the things that they wanted. Um some of the directions that they wanted us to go in and our forward thinking president was already doing a lot of what they were asking, and so that was really good. And um we had the audit and finance committee discussed a lot of what we've already heard here. And then I attended the pinning ceremony at the Psych Tech program, which was very moving. Um and that's all I have for the board.
Trustee Rios. Trustee Baker.
Um just briefly, you went to um audit and finance and then also the tail end of the uh Psych Tech, Psych Tech uh pinning. And let's see, can we go to uh the foundation party? That was very nice. And uh that's, I think, everything. Just uh tickets are still on sale for Nutcracker if you don't have plans this weekend.
Trustee Deluna. Trustee Iverson.
No report.
No steals.
I'll take all the rest of the time then, okay? Um I went to the Psych Pinning um ceremony, which is really moving. I went last year as well as the new trustee and it's just um just a really well done event and just so touching to hear the stories and see the camaraderie between the the small group of graduates. Um I also went to the Quanza celebration this week. Uh it was really fun to be a part of that. Uh I was kind of bummed though because the the speaker, the music wasn't um available, so we didn't get to dance at the end. So we need to figure out that music situation next year. I was looking forward to dancing, but the food was really good. Um also, uh a couple of weeks ago, I had, I attended the NVUSD um Guiding Coalition's second weekend. Out of a six month process, trustee Deluna was there, Dr. Powell, Dr. Guerrero. Um and it's just so great to, to see the community involvement at this level at our K through twelve district. I, you know, we really spent the majority of the time identifying student profile, um who we wanna ideally serve um going into the future at NVUSD as well as teacher profile. And the student that was sitting at my table is just uh, she was, she's a really, really bright um senior at American Canyon High School, Matsoda, her name is, and she shared that she's taking classes um at NBC and she wants to be a lawyer and is so just excited that she has opportunity to complete a lot of her coursework um through NVUSD. I mean through NBC while still at NVUSD. So um it's just always great to hear that, especially when not prompt. I mean, it just, people love to share the information. Um when I share that I'm an NBC trustee, they, I hear a lot of good reports out there, so good work, everyone.
Thank you, trustee Olson. So what I uh believe is my last board meeting is chair. I'm also gonna take up a little time. Um in my view, I told a lot of you uh trustees this, but my family always does a a roses and thorns dinner between the Christmas holiday and years and just rose, like what was your rose for the year? What was your thorn for the year? Bad stuff. Um and, you know, I look upon this previous year of twenty twenty three and there are so many roses. And um I look at, you know, the board, you know, starting off as a board in January and working really collaboratively and building consensus on our board goals, getting really into the weeds and the details. And I just, I I remember that very vividly, us working over there and and just coming together and and all being on the same page. But we, and if you look at our board goals, we've done, we've done everything. It's really, it's really remarkable. It's important, I think, that we all recognize that. Um that that um, you know, we get caught in these, these, these monthly meetings and we don't, don't take that broader perspective. So I just, I just wanted to mention that, cuz uh it was, it was nice for me personally to reflect on that. But it really is the board and all of us put together. Um and I just wanna just recognize all of you. I mean, just selfless, hardworking, passionate, um really putting the board, the district above yourselves and 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 really being dedicated to this important mission that we're, that we're all on. Um I, in particular, I do wanna recognize trustee Rios and trustee Baker and trustee Iverson who are here, you know, preceded me or kind of the the seniors on the 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 board. Um and have provided, you know, so much. I think we just have a great mix of of new board members who are bringing new ideas and new passion and energy. And I I won't call you older board members, more seasoned board members, experienced board members. Um and and the wisdom uh that you be, but personally to me, you know, over the past two years, you know, and coming off the tail of 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 trustee Baker when she was president of the board. Um you all, you've been incredibly mentor, great mentors to me, great cheerleaders, therapists and and many occasions I called, but I mean, I just still, every time I called you guys, I remember if you wanna value, you call me right back. And I just, it really meant a lot to me. Um cuz I think we all know kind of the the challenges that we've all all gone through over the past couple of years. Um I really do wanna thank uh our faculty, um our staff, both uh here, college, district and also the foundation. Um there's so, so many great things that I think we've done from student housing, uh revamping our IT system, um swat the policy updates, including the ever continuous budget, policy and resource allocation board policy um that we were able to get done, it seemed impossible probably two years ago. Uh billing up our reserve, we talked about that and going over that amazing accomplishment where where we're at ten percent and our um accreditation. And new fundraiser was really, I appreciate everyone's support on that, on that storm cup that we did. And we're, we've got a new date in August for next year. Um bringing in incredible uh new assistant, a VP of Academic Affairs, um who's just really been amazing. Dr. Moore, we're lucky to have you. Um you know, board gets a lot of accolades for everything that the district does. And, you know, we don't necessarily uh shy away from that. Um you know who we are. Um but I think we all know and uh in our hearts and our minds uh that this is all done because of you. Um and the wonderful team that we have i- at Napa Valley College. And I really do wanna, you know, recognize the Dr. G, um Dr. Warrenall, um Charlo, um Jim and and Dr. Powell, of course, uh really again for the last, you know, uh two years. Um it's just been absolutely incredible working with you and I've really enjoyed it tremendously. The same thing every time I call you guys, you dip your phone or you call me right back, you're so responsive. And I hope I didn't mess or bother you too much, but I I do really appreciate um all the time and um responsiveness and and really candid discussions that you've had. Um it's been really nice and 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 last and certainly not least, I really want to especially recognize Catherine. Um you are absolutely brilliant. Um you're sharp as nails, um great policy mind, um tireless work ethic, unwavering dedic-, yeah. Um you, you know, unwavering dedication to college and really this board. Um through thick and thin, you're always our our stone defender, even when we step in it every now and then, um including me. And um I just wanted to really thank you so much, Catherine, for for making this whole, this whole ship uh move forward and in the same direction. We really, we could not do this without you, so thank you very much. Um so, sorry. Yeah, that was good. Sorry. But um, yeah. And happy holidays. So uh we'll go to our our board meeting calendar. I think everyone has seen a copy and I don't know if there's any changes. We're gonna be sticking, I think, with the same schedule, third um, third Thursdays of the month, except for in cases of two months, which is in January where we need to meet um for um hiring. And then there's another month we're not in January, so that's in June. So are there any other um, does everyone like their calendar, any issues? Because we can, we can move it's date certainly, we need to, if there is a conflict. Okay, uh then we do need, is this a formal, it's not a formal, it's just a, we'll take action. Okay, uh well, I'd like you to move for approval.
I'll have approval.
Thank you, trustee Baker.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Olson, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing that. It is adopted unanimously. And we will go to our nomination and election of board officers.
Thank you. Thank you, president. That uh I have my script to read as well, so I'm going to read it, I'll start. Uh we will now move to agenda item sixteen point two, nomination and election of board officers. Education code seven two zero zero zero, as well, well as board policy two two one zero. Require the board elected officers at its annual organizational meeting in December. The district has two board officer positions. The first is president and the second is vice president, both of whom will take office as of January first, twenty twenty four. Before making nominations, there is opportunity for public comment on the election of officers. After that, trustees may ask questions or make comments. After that, there will be nominations for the office of president, followed by voting. Once a president is elected, vice president nominations and voting will follow. State law and board policy allow any member to nominate a trustee for president with or without providing reasons for making the nomination. Any trustee may nominate oneself and any trustee, including the student trustee, may second the nomination. When there are no more nominations that are seconded, there will be a motion to close nominations. Votes will be cast in the same sequence as nominated. The first nominee to receive a majority of votes will be elected to the position of president. If no person receives a majority on the first ballot, then the person who least votes is eliminated and votes will be taken on the remaining nominees until one receives a majority of the votes. If there is only one nominee, then that person is declared president and no vote will be taken. Once the president is elected, same process as used to elect vice president. That was a lot. Are there any questions, comments or actions regarding the process? Seeing none. Catherine, we have any public comment on this item?
No, I do not.
Are there any members of the board of trustees who would like to offer general comments for nominations? Then we'll move to nominations for the office of the president. Nominations are now open, the trustee for the office of the president. Who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination for the office of president?
I would like to nominate trustee Iverson for president.
Who wishes to second that nomination?
I'll second.
Trustee Iverson, you have any comments you would like to make regarding your nomination? Trustee Iverson is nominated to be board president. Who, if anyone wishes to be recognized to make another nomination?
I would like to nominate Rafael Rios. This past year, nobody has asked more questions than I thought were often questions than Mr. Rios.
Trustee Rios, do you have any comments you'd like to make regarding your nomination?
Well, I wanna thank you for that and I'm afraid I'm at the decline. It's, if you don't know, I'm a one person office and and there's a lot of work to be done. I think there's a lot more work coming and I I don't think I can give it the attention that it would require this coming here, but thank you.
Are there any further nominations? Thank you, trustee. Seeing no further nominations for the office of president, is there a motion to close nomination?
I will motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nominations for president are closed. Trustee Iverson is the only trustee nominated for the office of president and is elected board president for twenty twenty four. Congratulations. Nominations are now open, oh actually. Nope, nominations are now open to the trustees for the office of vice president. Who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination for the office of vice president?
I would like to nominate um trustee Olson.
Yes.
Second.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Olson, do you have any comments you'd like to make regarding your nomination?
No, just thank you um for the nomination and the second, your support.
I'm assuming that's a accepting. All right, thank you. Trustee Olson is nominated to be vice president. Who, if anyone wishes to be recognized to make another nomination?
Motion to close.
Seeing no further nominations for vice president, we have a first motion to close for vice president. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Trustee Olson. Congratulations, you're the only trustee nominated for vice president and you are elected board vice president for twenty twenty four. And this closes our elections. The board officers for twenty twenty four are trustee Iverson is president and trustee Olson is vice president. Congratulations. All right. And with that, we are done.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Announcement of future meetings. So we have a special meeting and board retreat on January tenth and a regular board meeting on January eighteenth. Happy holidays, happy new year and congratulations, trustee Iverson and trustee Olson. Thank you for your leadership and service.